We will open the general public comment period, which is an opportunity for the public to comment on any land use item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda. California law prohibits the commission from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency. Five minutes per person, please. Is there anyone who would like to speak to a topic not on the agenda today? It might be kind of hard for people to hear me. Has there anybody registered to speak?
There are. They're on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which consists only of the minutes from November, no, from, yes, November 10. Does any member of the commission or the public have any comments or corrections?
I do.
Okay.
On page two, the numbered paragraph two that starts 2020-074, text reads, "The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit," or, the "or" should be a "for." "The construction and operation of," should be "operation of," "a community scale," etc. That's already found.
Do you guys get that? Okay.
Can we turn the volume up? Turn the volume up?
Turn the volume up? Is there any way we can turn the volume up to the public?
We're trying to work on getting the interference fixed.
Feedback from the microphone. Thank you.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
My move will accept the minutes of November 10 as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Passes five zero, and we will get started on our regular agenda, beginning with item one, 2021-006, conditional use permit for the Crossroads Church. And Madeline, I believe you're going to give us a little presentation on that.
Madeline Flandreau, Planner Two. Today I am presenting conditional use permit 2021-006.
Is there a single thing she's saying?
Yeah.
Absolutely nothing.
Is my mic working? Your mic's on. Yeah, try taking it.
Yeah, I want her to speak now in a mumbled voice.
How about that?
No.
No.
Better.
Is there a way to turn up the...
Okay, so we got a couple things going on here. One, at least we have some sound that's so loud it's echoing here, and I'm not sure why.
Is this microphone any better? Yes. Okay.
We're still hearing the feedback.
But can the audience hear me now? Yes. Okay, then it was my microphone. What do you think? You want me to proceed, or you want to wait for the feedback to...
I would go ahead and proceed.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure why we're getting that. I'm just trying to find my mic now. Should we turn everybody else's mic off for a minute?
Okay.
All right, so here's what's going to happen. I'm keeping the lecture mic off until people start to speak, and then I'll be turning it back on. So you're going to have to wait. We need to run from there to here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's try that again. Madeline Flandreau, Planner Two. This is conditional use permit 2021-006 for the Crossroads Church. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for the construction and operation of a church in the rural residential zone. The subject parcel, SS's parcel number 061-025-040, is located on the corner of Copper Cove Drive and Black Creek Drive in Copperopolis, which is shown here at the bottom at the star. This is the county's 2020 aerial image, which shows the undeveloped 10-acre parcel, and surrounding is a mix of residential subdivisions to the north and the east, a park to the west, and large agricultural parcels to the south. I wanted to give a bit of background on this project, just to explain the lead-up to the current proposal. On May 20, 2004, the Planning Commission approved Plan Development Permit number 2003-144 for the Crossroads Church to develop a multi-phased, multi-structure church campus, which totaled 18,250 square feet in size with 162 parking spaces on the subject parcel. The parcel was, at the time, zoned C1PD, which is local commercial with a plan development overlay, requiring approval of a plan development permit for any new construction. However, the construction of the church was delayed, and the PD permit expired on December 31, 2005. The Crossroads Church has since been renting a space on Main Street in Copperopolis to hold services. Fast forward to November 4, 2020, when revised building plans were submitted to the county for the construction of a significantly scaled-back version of the Crossroads Church, showing a single structure that's 7,434 square feet in size with 95 parking spaces. Since the PD permit had long since expired, the applicant was informed that a new PD permit was required prior to issuance of the new building permit. So an application was received on January 28, 2021, requesting approval of a plan development permit. Subsequently, on March 9, 2021, Calhoun County Board of Supervisors adopted the Comprehensive Zoning Map Amendment, which rezoned many parcels within the county in order to be in conformance with the adopted 2019 general plan. As a result of that update, the subject parcel was rezoned to rural residential in order to be consistent with the rural residential land use designation. Per county code, Section 1722020, a church is permitted in the rural residential zone on a parcel of five acres or larger with an approval and validation of a conditional use permit. As the subject parcel is 10 acres in size, the request was changed by the planning director from a plan development permit to a conditional use permit, which provides the general public with an opportunity to review a proposed land use that's generally consistent with the purpose of a base zone district but has the potential to cause conflicts with the neighboring land use and zoning. So this is the site plan for the current proposal, which shows access to the site via the encroachment off of Black Creek Drive, which is on the left, access to the parking area and structure, which are located in the southern portion of the parcel. The church is proposed to have 95 parking spaces with four ADA spaces, and will include a chapel, classrooms, kitchen, dining hall, bathrooms, offices, and an infant nursery. This is a simulation of the proposed structure and surrounding parking, but does not include any proposed landscaping. The exterior of the building will be composite wood siding, which will be painted a light color with a composition shingle roof. So this is the landscaping plan, which is oriented with north up, so you can see Copper Cove Drive at the bottom of the screen, hopefully you can see that, and Black Creek Drive to the left. So the driveway is at the top of this plan. If you can see, there's four trees. That's where the, that's the top of the driveway. This plan proposes trees and shrubs to be planted all along the perimeter of the parking lot, which will screen much of the structure and the lot from the roadway and the neighboring parcels. Landscaping will also be planted within the blocks which separate the parking areas. This figure depicts the zoning classifications within the area. To the north are rural residential parcels within the Copper Cove Unit Four subdivision and developed with single-family residences. Adjacent parcels to the east are also zoned RR, which are part of the Bridlewood subdivision, and developed with single-family residences. To the south is Copper Cove Drive, beyond which lies large undeveloped agricultural parcels and a public service parcel. And to the west is Black Creek Drive, beyond which lies Black Creek Park, which is zoned recreational. The rural residential zone is a consistent zone in the rural residential land use designation, which identifies rural residential uses in areas appropriate for or that were previously subdivided into lots of one acre or larger where public sewer is not available. Typical uses include detached single-family residences, secondary dwelling units, accessory structures, public and quasi-public uses, like a school, park, or library, and other similar incompatible uses. The project application was circulated to county departments and local public agencies and state agencies. Comments were received from the Copperopolis Fire Protection District with standard requirements for existing driveway access and fire suppression systems for the structure. Comments were also received from the Public Works Department, including, excuse me, conditions requiring that the project meet all applicable requirements of the county road ordinance, the encroachment ordinance, the grading and drainage ordinance, and the road impact mitigation ordinance, and also requiring that the encroachment be commercial, meet commercial standards. In addition, a traffic analysis was required to determine the need for a left turn pocket at the entrance on Black Creek Drive, which was completed on June 4, 2021, which determined that based on traffic conditions of Black Creek Drive and that church services only occur one day a week, that a left turn pocket is not required. The study did, however, recommend that the applicant work with Black Creek Park to regularly trim back the oleanders that are along Black Creek Drive to increase the site distance and to cut the bank on Black Creek Drive on the side of the parcel to provide better site distance. In addition, a comment letter was received from Calhoun County Water District with requirements for a new water service line and a fire line. And Environmental Health also submitted a comment stating that all land use requirements had already been met, as there is an existing on-site wastewater system, which has been installed and permitted. So there were five comment letters, which were received from the neighboring landowners within the Bridlewood subdivision, which is to the east, all of which were in opposition to the project. Comments included concerns regarding a non-residential use in a rural residential area, future development or expansion of the church campus, increased traffic and noise, an equestrian trail which is directly adjacent to the eastern boundary of the subject parcel, and concerns regarding grading, which had occurred, and removal of trees on-site as a result of the grading activities. There are no future phases stated in the application, therefore, any expansion of the permitted church facility will require a modification to this conditional use permit, which would be subject to the approval by the Planning Commission. Noise will also be temporary during construction and intermittent during operations, with approximately 2 to 25 vehicles using the site during the weekdays, and up to 95 vehicles on Sunday mornings. In addition, Public Works did not have any concerns regarding increased traffic on Black Creek Drive or Copper Cove Drive. Also, with regards to the equestrian easement, so there's a 15-foot-wide equestrian and public utility easement, which is located along the western boundary of the Bridlewood subdivision, adjacent to the parcel. However, this easement is entirely within the bounds of the Bridlewood subdivision. According to the development plans, which have been submitted, the parking and access road will be more than 100 feet to the west of the dedicated equestrian easement, leaving a wide buffer, and landscaping will be installed around the parking area to screen much of the church and the parking area from the adjacent land uses. Prior to receiving this application, the planning department inadvertently approved a grading permit on December 15, 2020. Grading commenced on May 12, 2021, and a stop-work order was issued by the landowner, to the landowner, excuse me, by Public Works, as this project is subject to discretionary... Just one moment, Madeline. So sorry. Sir?
Excuse me, that is incorrect. The rating...
No, I'm sorry. Please hold your comments until the opportunity for public comments. Thank you. Go ahead. My apologies. That's what I have in the record. So a stop order, stop-work order was issued to the landowner by Public Works, as this project is subject to discretionary approval, and ground disturbance should not have occurred prior to the approval of this conditional use permit. And although it's unfortunate that the grading permit was approved, the issuance of an engineered grading permit requires that all grading and earthwork activities employ best management practices to minimize erosion and to control sediment discharges to the maximum extent practical, as required by the State Water Board's general permit, as well as meeting the requirements for drainage control. And although there were trees, which were removed during grading, these trees were shown to be within the grading footprint on the grading plans and therefore slated for removal, which was approved by the county. So the proposed project is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan, including policy LU 3.6, which is for the development, that development shall adhere to the density, land use intensity, and water and sewage disposal standards as set forth in Table LU 1, and policy LU 4.3, to ensure that new development is designed in a manner that is compatible with surrounding land uses through design and buffering, addressing potential impacts from noise, lighting, and traffic. The parcel is within the Copperopolis community area, however, there is no current community plan, and there are no general plan implementation measures applicable to the review of discretionary projects that further restrict this project. So an initial study was completed analyzing project-related impacts to the environment, and a negative declaration has been prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, finding a less-than-significant project-related impacts. The environmental document was available for public review from August 10, 2021 to September 10, 2021, during which two comment letters were received from adjacent landowners. The first comment letter was from Ms. Roberta Kelly, an adjacent landowner, who reiterated the concerns in her first comment letter to the application routing regarding a non-residential use in a rural residential area, future development or expansion of the church campus, the adjacent equestrian easement, grading and tree removal, all of which I have already discussed. Ms. Kelly did not have any specific comments to the secret document. The second letter was from Mr. and Mrs. Baxter, who are also adjacent landowners, which included many comments to multiple sections within the secret document. The letter stated concerns regarding impacts to scenic vistas, as the proposed construction is for a 27-foot-tall structure on the top of a hill adjacent to residential parcels. Although the construction of a church on the subject parcel will change the current view that the adjacent neighbors have of an undeveloped parcel, there are no designated scenic vistas within the project area. The Baxter's letter also had concerns regarding air quality and stated that the plans show a gravel driveway and parking area. However, the project has been conditioned to meet the requirements of Chapter 1770, which requires paving of the driveway and the parking area, which will eliminate dust that would otherwise result from gravelled surfaces. The Baxter's also stated concerns regarding biological resources with respect to the equestrian easement. However, the equestrian easement is entirely within the bounds of the adjacent subdivision, and personal equestrian facilities are not considered to be a biological resource. They also had concerns regarding site drainage and whether the on-site septic system was installed with permits. And as I stated previously, the issuance of an engineered grading permit requires that all grading and earthwork activities employ best management practices to minimize erosion and control sediment discharges to the maximum extent practicable. In addition, the on-site wastewater permit was issued and that received a final inspection on March 3, 2021. The Baxter's also had concerns with regards to hazards and transportation in the event that an emergency evacuation occurs. The subject parcel currently receives services from Copper Fire, Cal Fire, and the Sheriff, and none of these agencies had any concerns. The letter stated concerns with regards to noise, stating that the construction and operation of the church would greatly increase acceptable noise levels. However, Copper Cove Drive is a heavily-traveled collector roadway extending from Little John Road to Oberon's Ferry and provides access to a large portion of the residential areas within Copperopolis with a posted speed limit of 40 miles per hour. This indicates that the current transportation-related noise sources on Copper Cove Drive will not be greatly impacted by the addition of the church. In addition, all noise from the proposed use shall conform to the standards of the noise ordinance, which restricts daytime and nighttime noise levels. And finally, the Baxter's expressed concerns that the project has impacts that will be cumulatively considerable. Now, per sequo cumulatively considerable means that the incremental effects of a project are considerable when viewed in connection with the effects of past projects, the effects of current projects, and the effects of probable future projects. Although traffic has increased along Copper Cove Drive due to the construction of new residences in some of the adjacent subdivisions, traffic to and from the church will be limited due to the nature of the use and the occupancy is not considered to be cumulatively considerable. I also wanted to add that a comment was received on Tuesday, which you've all received, a copy of from myvalleysprings.com, which discussed an error in the secret document with regards to standards for all new lighting. The document incorrectly stated that all lighting will adhere to the development standards for the commercial zone, which is incorrect. Although this structure must meet commercial building standards, it's not required to meet the commercial zone development standards. Conditions of approval for CUPs are found in Chapter 1782, which do not specifically discuss lighting. However, after a thorough review of the submitted building plans, the only plans for exterior lighting include recessed LEDs under the covered front entrance to the structure, as well as floodlights along the perimeter of the structure, which are for safety. There are no planned lights for the parking area. So in conclusion, the project as proposed conforms to the applicable goals and policies of the county general plan, and the subject parcel is not within a community plan area. The project is found to be compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning in the vicinity. The subject parcel is 10 acres in size and is adequate in land area to accommodate the proposed use, and the project has been conditioned, excuse me, the project has been conditioned to have safe and adequate access. This permit is conditioned for the protection of public health, safety, and welfare. Letters of objection to the approval of the CUP were received from adjacent landowners within 300 feet of the subject parcel. However, all relevant concerns have been addressed, and the project has been conditioned to reduce impacts to the neighboring parcels. The potential impacts of the project were evaluated in an initial study and negative declaration, which revealed that this project will have a less-than-significant effect on the environment. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you. Thank you. Is there any member of the commission who has any questions for Madeline before we give the applicant an opportunity to speak?
Yes, I do. I wonder if you could pull up Exhibit H to the Baxter's letter of comment to the, it's In your packet, it came right before your response to comments. Yeah.
Okay. Has all the photos attached to it? Is it the one, or is it this one? Phil. E. F. G. Kevin, how do I show it? It's not showing on my screen.
That box is not on.
Okay, well, that box is going to stay there. This is, I understand, what the parcel looks like now after the aborted grading operations. There, great, thank you. Which shows a hill that has had, apparently had its top locked off, and then Phil has been put around the edges, it's the way it appears to me. My first question really is about the septic systems. It seems strange that we have septic systems already installed and approved, and if it's for a church that's going to be up on the top of this flattened hill, they must be up there somewhere, which would indicate to me that the grading is either completed or almost totally completed. And this is what's going to be the layout of the, where the church is going to be constructed. It seems strange that the septic system has been approved and installed and is all up to date before the grading has been finally approved. Do you have any comment on that?
At the moment, there's no interdepartmental review of on-site wastewater system permits. So that's purely under the purview and approval of the Environmental Health Department. From what I understand, that was applied for back in June of 2020. And from the last conversation I had with Public Works, the grading is complete, however, there's still a detention basin.
there's still a detention basin that needs to be installed. That's pretty much the update that I've received.
Okay. So, this is probably the way the hill's going to look.
From what I understand, yes.
Now, the EIR states that the parcel consists of gently rolling hills. It also states that the general plan includes rolling hills in its list of scenic vistas. The response to the EIR comments on the second page says, "There are no scenic vistas within this project area." I'm getting a quirky logic syllogism here. If rolling hills are scenic vistas, and this project had rolling hills, at least before the tops were lopped off, why wasn't this a scenic vista?
It's not a designated scenic vista. Scenic vistas can be a little bit tricky. They're not defined under SEQA. So, when the view of a few adjacent landowners is being impacted because there's an adjacent parcel that's being developed, that's not considered to be significant. It's more when there's a public view that is being altered, that's considered to be significant.
So, these people on their property looked out over rolling hills, but they're not... Who designates what's a scenic vista and what isn't?
Well, the general plan does.
Well, I thought you just said the general plan says that rolling hills are scenic vistas.
Well, it's determined that when the scenic vista, however you want to define that, is being altered to the effect that the public is now going to be impacted, then we can consider it to be a scenic vista. But in this particular case, it is a few landowners. Therefore, since it's not impacting the general public, we didn't see it as a scenic vista.
But people...
Certainly, you know, it is your discretion to say otherwise if you want to further condition the permit as such. That's going to be up to your discretion.
Well, I mean, weren't these... Wasn't this property available from the adjoining roads? So, the people were seeing these rolling hills?
Yes, and again, that's kind of subject to, you know, determination by you as to whether or not you're going to classify this scenic vista as an impact to the general public.
Okay, well, you have no indication that the public itself was not seeing these rolling hills?
Well, I suppose they could, but, you know, the objection letters that we received were from a few individuals.
Well, I understand that.
And the process of review was extensive. So, we sent out letters acknowledging the application and the secret document to, you know, a vast number of individuals for which we did not receive comments.
Do you have any photographs of the property from a public vantage point?
Available to show? Likely not. I mean, you could... From the... From Copper Cove Drive?
Copper Cove Drive or the other drive?
Something that we can share? I don't know that we've got those necessarily. I mean, you can... Most people have probably searched it through Google Maps and other various...
It just... As you can tell, I have a real problem when we say that rolling hills are scenic vistas, and this place has rolling hills, and there are no scenic vistas. So, my... Right now, without all the further discussions we're going to have today, my tendency is to say that the EIR should have said that it's not less than significant.
Okay, so for correction, it's not an environmental impact report?
I'm sorry, yes.
So, yeah, I don't really want to refer to the secret document as an environmental impact report.
I take that. I'm thinking that there...
Certainly, and if you think of, you know, if you think of Calvers County as, you know, as a whole, that could be defined as the entire county because that's our terrain.
But it's in the general plan, so...
Well, and again, that is up to your discretion to determine whether or not this classifies itself as a scenic vista that could be detrimental to the public if altered.
I will... We have a lot going on today, so I'll stop this right now.
So, I'm going to say one thing is I think that one possible interpretation and how I saw it is that scenic vistas are eligible for designation. And so, if you drive from Highway 4 from Stockton to the mountains, there is a rolling hills, and I think most people would see that that is something that we wouldn't want to wholesale change because that's the iconic California rolling golden hills look, but not that every individual hill or slope is necessarily protected by the general plan description of rolling hills.
Because we also have to consider the right to develop your property, understanding this is a discretionary application, but if you take that in the literal fashion, then we can pretty much...
Well, I understand, but also you can take it and you can say that there would be a significant that can be mitigated.
And there is possible mitigation. If you find that that is indeed an impact, we can discuss further, you know, conditions that we could possibly apply. If you are willing to, you know, consider approval of the application, then we can further discuss possible conditions that might offset...
Yes, such as landscaping.
Such an impact, absolutely. So, I don't think it can go necessarily without mitigation, but if the commission so chooses, we can certainly have that discussion.
Okay. If, instead of being used for a church, this parcel, 10-acre parcel, were to be subdivided and developed with houses?
Yes.
How many... Under the RR designation, how many houses could be built on it?
So, this is just above a 10-acre parcel, correct? With public water and onsite wastewater disposal systems, that would be a minimum one-acre parcel size. So, in theory, the parcel could potentially be divided into 10 single-family residential lots. On a single-family residential parcel, zoned rural residential, you can, in fact, by not only county ordinance but state law, have an ADU, which is an accessory dwelling unit. So, potentially, this parcel could be developed with 20 single-family residences.
And each of those residences would have a maximum height of 35 feet?
Correct.
And this has...
And that would not be... The only discretion would be through the subdivision map process, the tentative map process. The development of those, each individual lots, is not a discretionary action. Those are ministerial, only needing grading permits, septic permits, and building permits that are not at the discretion of you or any other board.
Okay. And so, we could... Getting back to the project at hand, we could impose conditions, mitigations, by specifically requiring certain landscaping and more specified than the current landscaping plan?
I would say that if you think that requiring additional specific landscaping is going to offset what you are determining is an impact to the environment, then I would think that that would be very acceptable for you to suggest some specific plantings of species in certain locations.
I need to make a comment here to clarify. I think that there's... We need to distinguish between conditions on the use permit, which can be just general things that you think are necessary for the public health, welfare, and safety, versus if you actually feel mitigation is required under the secret document, since this was circulated as a negative declaration, not a mitigated negative declaration, I think that would need to go back for recirculation. If it has... If you're feeling that it rises to the level of a significant impact within the meaning of SEQA, okay?
If the commission was to determine that.
Right.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Madeline, is there any way you could bring up attachment to the elevations? Do you have that in your packet? No, it's attachment to... I'm looking for this guy with the profile inside. Can you pull that up?
I'm having a hard time seeing it. Specifically the profile.
So, the dotted line's existing or was existing finished grade, correct? And then, the line below that, approximately what, four to five and a half feet, five and a half feet or so, is finished grade of the building pad? Yeah. So, approximately took off roughly five and a half feet.
I believe that Robin Peters has joined us. Is he on Zoom? Robin, are you available to answer any questions for grading?
Oh, he's here.
Oh, you're here, here?
Yeah.
Robin is the engineer with Delta Engineering who can answer any and all questions about the grading of this parcel.
I need to turn that mic on. Sorry. I say, it might be easier if you removed your mask while you're talking. Thanks.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Robin Peters with Delta Engineering in Jackson. The applicant has asked me...
That's as far as I can put it up.
Just give me a thumbs up and I'll go.
Speak up.
The applicant has asked me to help them navigate the use permit process, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So, off the finished grade to building pad grade, what's the amount, roughly, what did you remove or going to remove?
Did remove.
So, just to clarify what has been done, we designed a grading plan and improvement plans for this property. The rough grading is complete, so what you see today represents finished rough grade. Now, clearly, additional infrastructure and structural section has to be brought in to finish the parking lot, but no more mass grading will be done. This is it. And to your specific question about how much was removed, I don't have the grading plan handy, but if you were to zoom in on that profile, I could pick out the answer.
Yeah, I was looking at it. It's kind of hard to see the numbers, but it looks like about five and a half feet.
That's about right. We did balance earthwork, cut and fill on site, so that there was no import or export required.
And then it looks like you have a fill on the right... Well, I'm looking at the right-hand side, correct?
If you could zoom out so I can see the section line. So, this section would be viewed as if you were standing south looking north toward the building. So, we have cut on the left side, the west side, Black Creek Drive side, and then fill on the east side. And in profile, that's what you see. There's cut on the west side and fill on the east side. So, we balance the cut and fill on the property. I hope that answered your question. Okay, thank you. And then, Exhibit E, comment from... I believe it's the Baxter's. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone... Do you have Exhibit E from a comment letter from the Baxter's?
One of the photos.
Under the photos.
So, that shows the equestrian trail or easement all the way around that property. Now, does that property continue? Does it... Anybody know if the equestrian trail parallels Copper Cove, or does it terminate there? What's the easement on that? Does it surround that property or the...
It's along the entire boundary of that subdivision.
Okay, so it does parallel Copper Cove and continue all the way around?
Well, this is the assessors map. This is not the subdivision map.
It's the best map we have.
So, this is... I would assume, based on the notes that are here, that the dash line that's along the entire boundary of this subdivision, that yes, that is correct.
So, it doesn't... It's hard, Kelv, but it encapsulates this whole map right here. My question, correct? Okay. So, there's supposed to be a 15-foot... Is there... It was stated that there was going to be a 100-foot setback from the church. Is that on all sides or just the backside?
Do you mean the approximation that I made of the 100 feet?
Yeah, yeah.
That is just what I measured based on the two-scale grading plans that showed where the parking area begins with regards to the property line.
Okay, so not on Copper Cove?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Madeline before we hear from the representative of the applicant? Nope? Okay. Robin, are you speaking?
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, thanks for your time today. I'm representing the applicant, helping them navigate...
You might have to really speak up in order for the folks behind you to hear you.
I am helping the applicant navigate the use permit process. Appreciate your time today. The applicant has been pursuing a church on this property for several decades, as the staff report indicated, and, of course, a church was...
And of course, a church was permitted by right in the 03, 04 era. The planned development permit was issued in 03, 04 and then expired. But a church has been slated for this site for a very long time. At the time, and prior to early this year, January of 2021, this property was Zone C1 and a church is a permitted use in the C1 zoning district. It was only after January of this year that the property was rezoned to rural residential, which made a church conditional use, not permitted by rights.
That's why we're pursuing a conditional use permit today, and that's really the only reason. Had it not been for the rezone, of course, we would have pursued the second PD permit application that was submitted actually prior to the rezone, and we'd probably have sticks in the air by now. In any case, the applicant, the congregation has been attempting to relocate this church for quite some time. The goals, of course, are to provide better facilities, more adequate facilities for the congregation, but also to relocate the place of worship closer to the heart of the center of mass, if you will, of the congregation, which really is in the Copper Cove subdivision and adjacent subdivisions. The largest majority of the congregation resides in the Copper Cove subdivision and the adjacent subdivisions nearby that feed off of Copper Cove Drive. So the goal for a long time has been to bring their place of worship closer to the community, which as a matter of fact reduces impacts such as traffic, right? We're serving the same population that now travels four and a half miles to town to their current place of worship. And now by bringing this facility closer to the congregation, we actually significantly reduce vehicle miles traveled and reduce impacts associated with traffic. And that's a good reason to, it's a common reason for church facilities to try to relocate closer to their congregation, and that's what we're doing here. It's a good project, it's a good fit for the community, it serves the local community and provides them a local place of worship. We've reviewed the conditions, we take no exception to the conditions. In fact, we take no exception to the additional landscaping if that's appropriate. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think the staff report flushes this out very well and we look for your support.
I don't know how, how well you can answer, but how large is the average congregation on any given Sunday?
I can't answer that.
Oh, okay.
Eighty-six households, 212 individuals.
That's the average or is that just the membership?
That's, that's the, when I asked the applicant for these numbers, that's what I received.
Okay.
So I would assume that's average. I'm sure it varies from one Sunday to the next, but those are the numbers that I have.
Okay, thank you.
Just to put it in perspective, since I do have them in my hand, roughly 70% of the individuals reside in the Copper Cove subdivision and Bridlewood and the adjacent subdivisions right there around this, this subject property. So about 70% of the congregation is right there. So you see the advantage of locating a place of worship closer to the congregation. It reduces that back and forth travel, back and forth between here and town.
I have a question, Robin. So did you do the engineering on the septic system for this?
Yes.
Was it engineered for the 18,000 foot structure or the smaller structure?
No, it was designed for this structure.
Okay, how long ago did they install that?
Early this year. It is in the ground.
Can you tell us where it's located?
I'm sorry, and it's not uncommon, to touch on an earlier question. It's not uncommon for a project like this, church in particular, to eat the apple in bites, as it were, as money allows, generate revenue sufficient to install the septic system and then it gets installed. And then they generate additional revenue and then the grading is done. And sometimes these church projects take years to play out because it's a pay as you go system. You find the, find the money and then you build the next component. So that's, that's a very common approach for churches and, and that's what we see here. That's why the septic system was installed earlier, then the grading came later, and then of course the building later.
So I'm assuming the septic system is not on the pad but below?
Correct, it is not on the pad, it's adjacent to the pad to the northwest.
That's what you were asking about.
Yeah, thank you. Now, the applicant, application says that no trees greater than 12 inches in diameter will be knocked down for this project. And yet, there's an exhibit C to the Baxter letter, shows a tree with the knockdown that I assume was knocked down during the grading process, that is a very substantial oak tree. Were you, were you there when the grading was happening and did you see these trees? I was not there at the time of grading, but I did design the grading plan. And would you say that none of those trees that were knocked down were more than 12 inches in diameter? I, I can't, I can't comment. I didn't see those trees removed and I just don't know, I'm sorry.
But I want to clarify that they didn't say that none of them would be knocked down during the grading permit application. It was during this application.
This application?
Yes.
And this application, is it treated for grading? Yes, it does.
During the process, these trees were knocked down and substantial trees, certainly. That, yes. In the application, it's the question, will all proposed uses be confined within a building? And the answer is yes. Can you speak for the applicant, do they really mean that, that there's not going to be any barbecues outside or Easter egg hunts or outside services on Easter morning and this sort of thing?
I cannot speak for the applicant in that regard. I think the, I think the, the big picture answer is it's a church and services are held indoors. Will there be a barbecue once in a while outdoors? I simply don't know, and I'm not sure the applicant knows at this point. I would suggest that the primary use is an indoor use.
Sure.
And that's, that's, and I think in that regard, it meets the intent of the statement in the application.
And the applicant now understands that the driveway will be paved because of the application.
Oh, absolutely, yes. The encroachment, the driveway and the parking lot will all be paved.
I have no further questions.
I actually won't add on to that because he covered some of mine. Also weddings, funerals, summer daycare, are those activities that this church hosts? I would assume most churches do.
Every church does weddings, funerals, most do daycare.
Okay, so, so there could be activities happening every day? Or multiple days a week, not just Sunday services?
In, in theory, I suppose yes.
And there could, could be outdoor activities related to those items seasonally?
I would think there may be the odd outdoor activity, a kickball match on a, on a Wednesday during daycare. I would assume that's possible.
Thank you. Any further questions for Robin before we let him sit down? Mr. Wooster?
No, none from Robin?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just asked for an opportunity to provide additional comments before the public hearing closes.
We may have more questions. Then we will open this up for public comment. And I think it's three minutes per, or five minutes per person. Who would like to get started? Come on up.
Good morning, Marty Crane, it's nice to see you all. I want to talk about trees, lighting and the word cumulative. I think it's important that we all, all of us, regardless of how you feel about any development, understand what happens today and what will happen tomorrow and what happens during the process. I was standing, I live in Valley Springs, we've seen it all. I was standing across the street on Highway 26 and I heard this noise and I looked over and hears this tractor of some sort, I didn't know what it was, and it rolled up to, there were mature oaks here, a lot of them. Rolled up to a mature oak, wrapped its little steel arms around it, yanked it out within seconds and then moved on to the next one and the next one and the next one. Then they applied for their permit and said, there's no trees, we're not going to knock any trees down, it's because they were already done. We had experienced 800 trees up a little higher across the street. So we know about this sort of thing, and I'm not saying that's what happened here, but when you mentioned that one tree, I'm thinking, we just need to be aware of this. Also, when it comes to lighting, you said that there are no plans for lighting in the park, in the parking lot? I can't imagine, I mean, people of authority or responsibility in any organization come and go. I can't imagine at some point they might say, oh my goodness, we need lighting in this parking lot. People are going to run into each other or whatever. Landscape lighting can, can more than accommodate that without lights up on a pole. But it's, it's common practice for developments to come in and put lights up on a pole. And while you may shield them down from the sky, thank you very much if you do that, it doesn't shield it from the people around it and driving along. So, and, and I think that you would save significant, you would have significant financial savings if you, if you did that. Plus, I mentioned, you mentioned floodlights on the front of the building for security. Floodlights create shadows for people to hide in. And if you talk to a security lighting expert, they'll tell you that and you'd save an awful lot more money. And one last thing before I go, 30 years ago, sounds like a lot, but it was yesterday. My nephews came up to visit, and this is why I remember it so specifically. My nephews were four years old, four and five years old, and they came up and they arrived at night. And so we all ran out, picked them up, they were twins, picked them up. And one of them went, they lived in Orange County, where are the stars? And one of them looked up and went, wow, like this, he was just so amazed. And I said, yeah, lots of stars, huh? I said, I wonder how many there are? And he goes, one, two, three. They were so close, you couldn't count them. Now you look up, people might think, oh wow, look at the stars. It's nothing compared to what it was because we have so many lights in Valley Springs. I, I mentioned one time, we're on our way to becoming the, the next small Las Vegas in Vegas, in Valley Springs. And I was brushed off and they laughed about it. That's exactly what we're looking at. The fitness center used to blind you, but it doesn't anymore. Not because they've toned down the lights or even covered them, which they haven't, because there are so many other lights, that's cumulative. Every time we, we've got the Dollar General or Dollar Store, whatever it is, with lights blasting all around. Everybody's got a big light, they got to outdo the next person. And so when we think about these things, I just want us to remember the word cumulative is a big word. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good morning, is this good part? My name is Kathy Luzie. My husband and I bought in Copperopolis on Bridlewood Lane four years ago, thinking this would be a retirement coming from the Bay Area. I can drive, I can find a place to park my own car, I can go outside, I can look at the rolling hills. I like that. I would hate to have my property lose in value for years to come when my children inherit this, that it's not what it is that we bought. I have four things. The road. It says here for your thing to do on the road that they will, they are going to pave the road and the parking. Paving of the roads in parking lot will be temporary in nature. What does temporary in nature mean? Is it permanent where the roads will be paved all the time or what does temporary mean? When they used to use this lot for their church services, it was all dirt. The cars would drive in from Black Creek all the way to the fence, to the fence. Not 15 feet from the fence for the horses to be walking. They would drive all the way up to the fence line. My house, if you look on the description, is the closest property building to that fence line. When I sit out on my deck, these cars drive all the way straight up. The 15 feet equestrian, I'm responsible for. If anything happens on that, I'm responsible. The 15 feet needs to be stopped as the fence for my house, they can't come into my yard. The 15 feet needs to be having a fence or something put up so the cars stop from coming up there because they still will be able to drive around the whole lot because that's not being stopped. And if the horses are out there, anybody walking down could scare a horse. My next thing is the noise. The noise they say is 45 decibels or 60 decibels depending upon if it's a community or if it's a church. The noise level isn't so much how loud it is, but the time that it is. If the noise doesn't stop by start at after seven or end before 10, that noise accumulates up into the air. And it's not just the noise of people, it's the noise of the cars going in and out of the parking lots. And my last thing is, is they said they did a traffic report on June 4th. I don't know what day of the week that was, but if June 4th is not a Sunday when cars will be going in and out of Black Creek and Copper Cove Drive, the left-hand turn lane needs to be taken care of because all those people that live up in Saddle Creek or in Copper Cove on the top, that's their main thoroughfare down to O'Burns Ferry in order to get to Highway 108 or in order to get to the grocery store, which could impact fire and ambulance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not very good at this, but I'll give it a try. My name's Roberta Kelly and I own the house at 404 Bridlewood Lane. It is the one that is facing the fence the most and in, as far as where the church is going. Now my house, all of my windows that I can look out are on that side of the house. I have in my living room, a large sliding glass door that is at least eight feet high. It's the largest ones you get. I had vaulted ceilings. I have a big window on each side of that. My dining room table, the same thing, big window facing that. They might not consider me a vista, but that's my vista. My bedroom window, large window faces that church. Now I bought my house because of retirement. My, the area that I live in in Bridlewood, we have two houses that have children, out of 22 houses that are there. Most of the people around us are retired. I'm sorry if you don't feel that that's my vista, but it was. And this vista that I had, they have, have excavated it twice since I've been there. And I don't know if they got. And I don't know if they got a permit for the first one or not because it was about a year before the second one was done that they took it down to where it is now. So, I don't know how far they were supposed to take it each time or what. Your dates on when they did the excavation are completely wrong. They did the excavation on May 3rd. Started at 6:30 in the morning. They were taking that tree out, that huge tree. That isn't the only one they took out and it's not the only time they took out. They took trees out, big oak trees, for the other times when they were doing excavation. The excavation started on June 3rd. Seven o'clock in the morning on June, not June, sorry, May 3rd. Seven o'clock in the morning on May 4th, the building department posted, "Do not do any more excavation." Excuse me, they did and they never stopped. They did it the 4th and the 5th, all day. They started like at 6:30 in the morning. My contractor wouldn't start work until after 7 because of noise problems for the neighbors when I had my garage built. But these people started before 6:30 because they were taking down the tree at 6:30 and woke me up. Which, that's a minor part because I get up by 7 anyway. But on June 4th, they gave them the notice early in the morning to stop and they just kept working all day, no breaks, nothing. It's June 5th, they finished working at 5 o'clock at night. Now, that's a whole day, two days of working excavation when they've been told not to do it, to stop. And when the contractor, when I talked to the contractor, me and Kathy, he says, "I'm paying $25,000 a day for my equipment and my men to be out there doing it. I'm not stopping." This is what we're going to deal with, with a church? These people that are supposed to be, you know, Christians and following the rules? I listened every weekend almost during the COVID thing. I have a little, cute little area that I made a little sitting area in my backyard. And I sat there and listened to their preaching every Sunday morning. And getting close to the time that they were going to stop this and they're talking about the plans being drawn up and that, you know, they're getting approvals for this and they're getting approvals for that and we're going to be starting buildings soon and we're going to be doing excavation, all this stuff. He also started talking about the school they want to put in on that property. Now, this is an area that is mostly retirement people. The two houses that have children are members of this church and God bless them. But, they are not telling you what they're doing in the future. When I approached Terry, the guy that turned in the paperwork to you about, his name's on top?
He tried to pass it off that, "No, there wasn't going to be, I don't know what you're talking about." I said, "Well, excuse me, but you've seen me sitting here every week and you know I heard this."
Then he says, "Oh, well, that's going to be in the future. You'll probably be dead and gone by that time." Excuse me? This is my future.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
They, they aren't being, there's a lot more things going wrong with that place.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item?
My name's Deborah Costin. I also live on Bridlewood. I've also been a planning commissioner for almost, a little over seven years. I was chair for over four and a half down in the Bay Area before coming up here to retire. I see that the staff has already given you a recommendation for approval without actually taking into account the neighbors' concerns. Yes, they addressed them by dismissal. You are open to all sorts of lawsuits just in the way this application has been handled. Issuing permits before approvals, any approvals, lack of timely notifications to residences, stop notices not enforced, lack of concern for animal and personal injury, loss of property values. Now, loss of property values for all of the people surrounding this project means also lack of, loss of revenue for the county. There's noise disturbances and noise disturbances to the neighborhood. Knowing there needs to be a Copperopolis community plan done and still not having even started it when all of the other cities in the county have already been completed, the fact that zoning for this parcel had already been changed to our shows that the residents don't want their rural environment and feel to be lost. There will be a significant loss of rural community. The views, the rolling hills, which is what we all look at now, will be lost. Traffic, noise, light from the commercial project, and this is a commercial project. The community plan should be done prior to a CUP approval. I have about six other items that I think should be done prior to a CUP approval. The occupancy has still not been stated. What is the maximum occupancy for this facility? The traffic study. I'll go into more detail on each of these. The, let's see. A fence along the border of their property along the equestrian trail. All surface parking, it should be part of their use permit to have all surface parking and roads to be asphalt or concrete. We also think that there should be at least, if this is to be approved, there should be turn lanes onto and off of Copper Cove Drive to be a part of the CUP. And time restrictions, no noise after 10:00 PM. Now, I'm going to go a little bit more into detail again. For a church, you could have an occupancy of 1,062 people at 7 feet per person or 14 feet per person, which would be about 531. At 531, with 95 spaces, that's 5.5 per vehicle, which is acceptable according to the code. However, more likely you're going to have four people in a vehicle, which would mean you'd need about 133 spaces or five people would be 107. Occupancy dictates parking requirements, yet no maximum occupancy numbers are in this report or have been given. The traffic study should have been, now get to traffic. Traffic studies should be completed prior to any approval of the CUP. There is already a significant increase in traffic on Copper Cove Drive, which is a connector road between Little John and O'Burns Ferry. The traffic and noise have already increased from current rural residential developments as well as single-family residences such as Saddle Creek. Your statement, "Traffic to and from the church will be limited due to the nature of the use and will not be cumulatively considerable," is not accurate. You continuously emphasize it is already located in Copper, yes, it is, on Main Street, right off of Highway 4. People come from not only Copper Cove Development or Bridlewood. They also come from other rural communities and they come in through Highway 4. Highway 4 is a major thoroughfare and so is Main Street and O'Burns Ferry. And it is a commercial area and that's where that church does belong. This church is really a commercial multi-use building. Its approval, it needs to be stated that no future, other future developments on the subject property. I'm running out of time, so I will go back to time restrictions and state that we currently have no noise issues and are able to sit out and enjoy our peaceful and scenic landscape that God has provided us without light interference or building interference. Again, please vote no and not undo God's glorious work. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Good morning and thank you for taking me in today. I'm Gerald Baxter. I'm the one that probably wrote that primary rebuttal. And we bought this property back in 2010. And again, as a primary purpose of buying this house was because we love the country. We love the rolling hills, we love the views. And we bought this property because of that. When, we didn't know that the church had purchased that property and such, I was under the impression that they didn't purchase it until around 2010, but it sounds like they must have purchased it before that time. Anyway, when we talked to our real estate agent when we were buying, we asked about that property and inquired about it. And I was told it was a residential area that that was eventually going to be homes instead of being a church. One of the big problems, I think, that Copperopolis is seeing is that we don't have a community plan for this area. Most of Calvaras County does have a community plan for those residents in those areas. And by having that community plan, we would be able to eliminate a lot of these issues that are coming up about these type of situations. I would like to see that this county take that as a high priority to make sure that we don't have any other fiascas such as the developments around Poker Flat, the Cliffs Oak Bay development and all of these other areas that have been a total disaster. I'm not against the church. It's just the location where they're deciding to put it. It's right in my backyard and I'm sure many of you have heard the term, "Not in my backyard." Well, you're going to hear it again. It's in my backyard, I have to look at it. Would you want this in your backyard? Would you like to look out every day and see this structure in your area every single day? And if you notice on that Exhibit H, may I take this down? This is just the problem. If you notice on Exhibit H, that's a fairly high mountain that was graded down. And again, it's been graded before this actual gradient that was done recently. So, the church came in and cut it down flat so that they could have some surfaces. So, it was actually higher. And that hill acts as a buffer of the noise coming down on Copper Cove Drive. If you listen to the diesel trucks and the trucks running up and down that hill, they echo through that area. Now that they've graded that down, that has now not that noise or increased that noise in that area because of that gradient. The other thing that was brought up too was the, they did do the grading on May 3rd. It was reported in the document that I received as May 12th. It's May 3rd. Again, I was the one that called the planning department on May 3rd when I saw them doing that work. And I asked, "I've never received any notice about this development going on. I have never received nothing." And the churches never approached me and said, "Hey, we're going to build a church right next to your property. Do you have any input? Do you have any things that you would suggest that we do to, so it doesn't mitigate you as far as a neighbor?" Never was I ever approached. And so, I called the planning department and immediately they told me, "Oh, a CUP hasn't been issued. They're not supposed to be doing anything. No permits have been issued." Well, then later I found that a permit was issued prior to the CUP, which is not correct. No permits should have been done until that CUP was done. And then, the other thing is, people within 300 feet of that property were notified about that CUP. And note that that CUP came out on May 3rd, the date I called. It would have never come out, probably, if I hadn't called the planning department that day and told, "I want to cease and desist order until CUP is done." And then, the notice was posted at 7:00 AM in the morning and they continued for two days after that. Because of money. And you want us to trust the church now? What's going to happen in the future? They're going against their own preachings about not following laws and procedures. And so, I'm adequately opposed to it just because of their process and procedures of what they've been doing. I'm concerned about the noise and everything that will be generated from this process.
Your time's up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good morning, Phil and Commissioner. First of all, let me thank you for what you do. It's not an easy job and you're never going to satisfy everybody. Really not. I like to say hello to my neighbors and the church members also. My name is Bruce Hutkins. I live at 300 Bridlewood Lane. Can you hear me? I live at 300 Bridlewood Lane and we've occupied the home for seven years. I'm, this is new to me to find out that this permit was actually tenderly approved in 2005. I mean, that's actually the kind of thing that I would have liked to address during escrow when we bought our property. I'm surprised that that wasn't part of our disclosures, sitting there. What I'd like to address this morning is, when is the final occupancy permit for this building? Because it is an assembly building and you kind of have to take the church aspect out of it and take a look at the assembly part of it. One of the comments was something about there has not been occupancy, a maximum occupancy number established yet for this building. Is that true?
That was the comment, that that's not necessarily so. I'm sure that the occupancy numbers are available. On the building permit, we're not reviewing the building permit here today. But I'm sure that those numbers are available.
Okay, so there has, as far as the approval so far, there has been a number set as far as the occupancy for the building? Is that true?
I haven't seen the building plans, so I can't tell you, but I am, but that's required as part of the building permit process. So, I'm sure that there is a number set.
Okay, well, that is actually pretty important to know what the occupancy is as far as parking and people that are in the pews. I mean, that's actually pretty important. As far as, a key point was brought up about as far as churches. Churches have, they have a great vision, what they want. It's a little different from a developer. And the comment was brought up about pay as you go. And a lot of churches get into this circular position of paying as you go. And so, unfortunately, it leaves a lot of projects prolonged or unfinished or continuously apply for re-permits and as they go along and things have a tendency to change. So, the biggest concern I have right now is far as the actual goal, end goal of this building. And one is, has to do with the parking and the actual parking service around the building. Now, as far as occupancy permits, especially since it is, it's going to be an A, A1 or an A2 occupancy building because of the number of people in this building, it's going to require a lot of parking spots. And parking spots, the drainage, the asphalt, the infrastructure around it is extremely expensive. And a lot of people underestimate what that's going to cost. They're taking a look at the structure itself and they don't look at the infrastructure around it. So, I can't look at a crystal ball right now and take a look at your future, but I can just pretty much guess that the occupancy, the occupancy permit process for this sum structure will be piecemeal along. The structure will be constructed and then occupancy permit will be requested to actually have a church meetings and assembly there prior to the parking lot being finished. So, you're going to end up with a dirt lot, gravel lot with cars going in and out. We already addressed dust and conditions to the road. That's runoff on the road, mud, dirt, gravel. That's something this planning commissioner should address. And it's actually something that you could do right now as far as conditions, as far as this project going on, is to prevent occupancy until the parking lot has been done, that's asphalted and egress and access has been completed. And you take a look at the actual project of this, if you take a look at the structure, you take a look at the drainage, you take a look at the parking, you take a look at the landscape, I have a feeling this church has grossly underestimated the cost of this project. And the community is going to see this go on for a long, long time. And the polar opposite, you can take a look at what's going on right now down at Copper Cove and O'Burns Ferry Road. The storage facility that's being built down there, that is an example of the most professional construction project I've ever seen. That project, you can see how that's being built. They've addressed drainage, they've addressed egress, they've addressed the surface, they've addressed landscaping, all at one time. That is an example. That is an example of what you want to see. And I'm afraid this...
Your time is up.
I'm afraid the church has underestimated this project, and I'm afraid the planning commission has underestimated the project too. So today, if you can take, if you can address the conditions of this permit, and particularly address the levels of occupancy regarding the parking and the actual completion of this project. And I'd love to hear a representative of the church...
Thank you, sir.
To actually address this too. That'd be great.
Thank you. One last chance, folks.
I just want to say thank you for allowing people to finish their thought. At the Board of Supervisors, you're done. You're gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Anybody else before we... Thank you. Come on up.
Hi. My name is John. I'm a member of Crossroads Church now on Main Street. I am the general contractor. I've been a member of this church for about six years, and I've been the one in the process for the last year and a half of getting this project in the works. I met with the director of the planning department, the development at the time, Scott, and the plant check, Zach. And I met with these guys just so I can get a good idea on how, you know, what, under the codes, you know, the best way to go about it. So the occupancy is 300, okay? That gives you three people per car. That gives you the 97 parking spaces with a handicap. That's the occupancy. In regards to the finances, we, I'm a contractor. I built Bridlewood in '03, '05. I built all their homes. I was part of Lippie Construction. I was a superintendent. And when they were developing that property and moving all the rolling hills, people in Copperopolis were just as adamant of that not going on as they are. But at that time, you know, I'm a builder. And so I'm going to be building this church for Crossroads, and we have every intent to move quickly. That's how I build. And I just wanted to let everybody here know that we want to go by the rules. And the reason why we kept grading was because of what Madeline said, because of the storm, water drain, you know, we were already a mess, and we had to finish what we had to finish so that we complied. Okay? Thank you. Any questions?
Not for me. Thank you.
My name is Terry Barrett. I am one of the pastors at the church. Been involved in the planning, doing our best to mitigate any problems regarding our neighbors. I have felt that I have treated them, especially Roberta Kelly, who has the only house that actually faces, and it's the backyard that actually faces, the property. She's the only house that can see clearly the parking lot and the church building. The rest of the homes, one next to it, I believe, Mr. Baxter?
No.
Or next to it, they built a rather large garage, very high, has no windows. It pretty much blocks them from seeing their church unless they go out in front of their home. The other homes are further back. If we, I don't know whether we have a picture of the layout of the homes or not, but you can see that there is not a lot of sight from their homes looking at the church. And there is another home in relationship, I understand, the scenic aspect, that is quite in the distance. I have pictures on my cell phone of all the homes, their proximity, the height, et cetera. I would also say concerning, the concern for noise, we cut down that hill approximately four feet, and there was another cut as there's fade from before. However, the building itself, at 120 feet long, 27 high, which includes the peak of the roof, is going to take away more noise from the road than the hill took away. Now, as to trees, I personally did my best about three years ago to trim the dead branches on all those oaks facing the various homes, and trying to get rid of the mistletoe because they were being diseased. And one of the biggest trees, I personally cut down about two and a half years ago. It was rotting in the middle and a danger, and the mistletoe literally took over the trees. And if you let that tree continue, the birds and whatever just move it to the other trees. So I just want to say to you folks, we're not bad neighbors. We've worked the best, and we're not trying to go around people. We're just trying to do things right, be a good neighbor, and we're doing what is requested of us, and we'll continue to do so. I also want to speak to one other thing, and that is that this is the first church building being built since 1865. That's 151 years. No buildings have been built in Copperopolis for a church. Churches, at least this kind of church, spends a lot of volunteer time among the congregation, as well as the pastors themselves, counseling people, helping people in the community, taking the time to build up the welfare of the community. And it will help, in the long run, to such a great degree, people won't realize until they look back possibly. We're not wanting to build a church to have a rock band out in front of the church playing loud music we meet inside the building. And even the church is built such, in the back where the dining area is and the eating area is and outdoor, it will be on the backside of the church, mitigating any problems in relationship to noise going the other way. So I just want to encourage people to understand, we want to do what is right, and of course, not everybody will agree on what is right all the time, but we have the welfare of the community.
Sir, yeah, your time looks like...
Thank you.
Just what, are there any questions? For him before he sits down? Hey, we'll have an opportunity during the next...
I just wanted to say he's the applicant, so he got longer. That's why I shut it off.
That's fine. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Going, going, gone. Okay, we're going to close the public comment portion of...
We have Zoom people, so...
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, do we have a couple people on Zoom that we can bring on?
Yes, if Erwin would like to speak.
Mr. Hedervick, can you hear us?
Erwin is my neighbor, worked in it. I report about it.
Okay. So Ms. Hagerty, are you prepared to speak? She's speaking on a different project.
It's possible that if you don't have your microphone or your speakers to the computer turned on, when it highlights their names, they are speaking.
Ms. Hagerty's is muted. Only Ms. Howell's is on, so...
Check your speakers, though. The connection between the computer and the sound system. It's very rectangle and green, keep talking.
Keep bringing something up in the chat, but it goes away too quick.
Yeah, there it is. Let's see.
Wanting to speak on a different project.
Okay, so we can't hear Victoria, but they can.
They can hear each other. Can we get a phone connection?
We apologize. Let's see if we can figure this out so we can hear her. He had it on mic, and then she seemed to put it on here, but it's not working. What did you just put it on? Yeah, that's what she said to put it, because they changed it over, but we're still not hearing. No, no, no. We don't hear you at one of them.
I can't hear any of it. Gina's on here. Victoria's on here. I'm on here. I tried twice. It's, I don't want to speak on this one, but they can't hear me.
I think we can hear somebody.
And I've taken it off mute. I've done everything I can think.
I can hear you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
This is Erwin. I can hear you.
Hi, Erwin. It's Victoria. I'm just going to write them in the text box, just a quick something, and then they don't have to worry about getting to me, I guess.
Yeah, it's very confusing and frustrating. I've been trying to get word to them. I told them that I could hear you, but...
Yeah, thank you.
So we can hear both of you now?
We can hear you. You can speak. We will hear you.
Ms. Howell, we can hear you now. Would you like to go ahead and speak?
She can hear us?
Ms. Howell, can you hear us?
Are they still trying to get us to hear us?
We can hear you. Victoria, we can hear you now.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Well, obviously can't hear us.
Right.
See, that's the problem. I do apologize. IT changed something, and we weren't notified, and I don't know.
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I can't hear you. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. I am going to quickly speak because it's really difficult since I can't hear you guys responding. I don't really know what's going on. But I am just calling in, or I just wanted to comment, I am a member of the Bridlewoods neighborhood. A lot of my neighbors have spoken, and I respect all of them, and I respect their opinion. My home does not border the church project. However, I am a member of the Bridlewood Church. I personally and my family are looking forward to this, to the church addition. For us, not only is it convenient, but we, we look forward to congregating with them. We feel like it's a safe space for us and a good space for our, our family and our kids. I just wanted to be sure, to be on record, to be a person in the Bridlewood community that is in favor of this project. However, I understand that I do not have direct sight view of the church. I am not as concerned about the noise either because my house is set back a little farther. However, there is a park on the other side, directly on the other side of the Black Creek Drive, that, all the way down to my house, I can hear noise from the park also. So I don't see, I, personally, in my opinion, I don't see that the addition of noise from the church, which would basically be on Sunday mornings and indoors, I don't see that to be any additional noise issue in the neighborhood for us. But again, my house is set down and back farther away from everyone else's. But yes, I just wanted to go on record as myself and my family are in favor of this project.
Thank you. I'm not sure they can hear me, but is there anyone else online who would like to speak to this item? No. Great. Now we will close the public comment portion of this hearing. And Madeline, would you like to recap and respond?
Yeah, we'll see if we can, took lots of notes. We'll see if we can address some concerns and then carry on. One of the overwhelming concerns that I kind of started to hear from multiple people was concerns about lighting, specifically, obviously, lighting trespass into the impacting neighbors, residential neighbors. Certainly, even though there's no exterior lighting plan at this time, you know, they could, in fact, at some point in the future, propose... Yeah, we'll see if we can, took lots of notes, we'll see if we can address some concerns and then carry on, one of the overwhelming concerns that I kind of started to hear from multiple people was concerns about lighting, specifically, obviously, lighting trespass into the impacting neighbors, residential neighbors, certainly, even though there's no exterior lighting plan at this time, you know, they could in fact at some point in the future propose parking lot lighting for which they would have to come in and get a building permit for, we do have the ability to put notes in the permitting process that would alert everyone to, you know, the fact that there might be further conditions or further restrictions upon lighting, so, you know, in order to assure that there won't be any lighting trespass or other impacts associated with the lighting to light night skies and so forth, you can condition the permit that any future, existing and future lighting comply with the lighting, commercial standards for lighting which requires down shielding of lighting and so forth, so we are prepared to roll that into a condition of the permit if you see that that's necessary. Addressing some of the other issues, there was a concern about a reference to temporary paving, I'm not exactly sure where that comes from, but paving is not temporary, that is a condition of the permit if approved, and that is a section of the county parking ordinance that requires paving, so there is nothing temporary about the paving situation, the encroachment, the driveway, the parking lot will all be required to be paved according to code, and that will be required prior to occupancy, usually, the parking lot is one of the last things that goes in, but they will not get a certificate of occupancy from the building department until the planning department has reviewed, done a site inspection which indicates that all the parking and landscaping has been done according to plan, so no parking is, no paving is temporary. Parking next to the fence line, it appears that by Madeline's determination based on the site plan that their parking lot is well over 100 feet away from the property line in question, so I don't see that to be an issue, let's see, there was a comment about a traffic analysis needing to be done, there was a traffic analysis that was completed at the request of the Public Works Department which determined that a left-hand turn lane was not necessary. Noise impacts, all of us, every, every residential, commercial project in this county has to comply with a noise ordinance, so the church is not exempt, they will have to comply with a noise ordinance that is a provision of county code and enforced by the county sheriff's office, and certainly, if they want to be, need to be reminded of what that code section is, we can certainly direct them to that so they ensure that there are no violations of that noise ordinance. Let's see, moving down.
Excuse me, just one moment, was there a question?
I have one question. If you have 100 cars leaving one place at the same time, you don't think you're going to have a parking or driving problem of getting out?
I, I'm sorry.
The public hearing is closed, so everyone's had their time, but the Public Works Department is responsible for reviewing traffic-related impacts, and their determination was that there was no significant impact and therefore no, left-hand turn lane was required, so no subsequent studies have been requested of the Public Works Department, so that's, we have to rely upon them and the traffic analysis in order to make those determinations, and that was already completed and identified as not being a significant impact warranting any additional improvements. So, let's see. I don't really see, there's, there seemed to be some, some suggestion that there was two separate times of grading, I, I don't know, I can't speak to the first, the first grading that supposedly took place, unfortunately, there was a grading permit that was submitted and reviewed and approved prior to the commencement of this CUP, actually, the PD application which turned into the CUP, so it is unfortunate that that actually took place prior to, but we're trying to do our due diligence and address those concerns at this point, but I don't see how the timing in this respect is really that relevant. In regard to occupancy, we did, we do have a calculation that we use to figure occupancy of the Assembly Building, and so the parking that has been proposed and submitted as part of your development plan is in conformance to the, to the county parking ordinance which is in direct relation to the occupancy of the building. What that occupancy is, I don't know, we don't have the notes before us, but certainly, there is a calculation that, you know, Madeline had reviewed and determined that the number of parking lot, the parking spaces were sufficient for the capacity of the sanctuary. There was a concern that the, the church was somehow going to be able to occupy the building prior to all improvements, and the, as conditioned, the Public Works, or I should say, the Building Department will not be able to issue a final certificate of occupancy allowing the church to occupy the building prior to completion of all of the conditions and whatever mitigation is applicable as well to that certificate of occupancy, so improvements such as the driveway, the encroachment, the parking lot, the landscaping, all of that will have to be done prior to them actually getting permit, permission from the county to occupy the building. And, Maddie, is there anything else?
I just wanted to clarify that word temporary that was brought up in one of the first comments, the statement in my report is that the nature of construction is temporary, so the, the construction of the building and the installation of the parking and the drive and the landscaping, that is all temporary in nature, obviously not ongoing, so there may have been a little confusion there, but just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Gina or Madeline before we give Robin another opportunity?
I have some questions.
Hey, Ben.
On the paving of the driveway and the parking, what I see in the resolution is on page four, under the planning requirement conditions, three dash three, which should be two dash three, says, "Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy from the County Building Department, the parking lot shall meet the parking standards of section 17.70.030 for 90-degree parking as shown in figure one of said section," just reading that code, I don't see the word driveway, and I'm a little concerned that the way this is phrased, it's pretty narrow, and I just want to make sure that the condition does require paving of all of the parking and all of the driveway.
It, it should, so if you want to add some language to ensure that there is no misunderstanding of what that condition is, then certainly, we can, we can modify that.
Okay, that's one, the second one is, the staff report is, makes it clear that there will be landscaping installed around a parking area to screen it and much of the structure and neighboring, the road and the neighboring parcels, and will be planted within the blocks that separate the parking areas, but I'm not seeing that appearing as a condition, I saw a landscaping map on the screen, I do not see that attached to the draft resolution, and I do not see a condition that requires it, and are we, are we gonna fix that?
We, we did fix that and we sent a revised resolution via email, did all of you get that?
There was a flurry of things that were sent.
Okay.
I think what Kelly's looking for is the word. So, so the, so the specific language reads, it, it actually is reiterated in condition, Planning Department, condition two dash two, and it says, "The development shall be in substantial conformance to the submitted site development plans including as, included as exhibit A of this resolution," if you look down through exhibit A, it includes the landscape plan, so we didn't specifically condition the landscape plan by itself, we included the landscape plan in exhibit A which is the development plans, if you want, we can, we can reiterate that by, or clarify it by indicating development plans including landscape plan and parking if you'd like.
It would probably be a good idea, but I think part of my confusion arises from the fact that what I received as the revised resolution doesn't have that, so there must have been another one I didn't get.
We, we could use hard copies of what was sent out last time, I want to, I mean, the current revised resolution would be nice.
So, are you saying that you did not get the revised resolution? I mean, we emailed it, Madeline emailed it out to everyone.
I did get one, but it doesn't have that.
I'm afraid I didn't, didn't check in after, after you sent that out.
That was done back in November, right?
November? Oh, yeah, I remember now.
Like on the 29th.
Was there anything sent out yesterday?
No.
Okay, I have that revised resolution.
Okay, well, my last comment I think has been covered, and that is, I would be in favor of a lighting condition applying the commercial standards here.
For the lighting?
Yes, as you suggested.
A question on that, while we're on that subject, that would cover also these floodlights that are on for the security on the side of the building?
Right, so all lighting should be shielded and directed downward so that it does not, the word is trespass on to neighboring properties, so, you know, certainly, that is, that is something that is rolled into the performance standards in the commercial zones, but, but not into the residential zones, that would have applied if the zoning of the property hadn't have changed from C1 to RR, but knowing that it is now currently RR, we could in fact roll that in as a condition which will ensure that any future, existing and future lighting, if in fact they decide that they want to light the parking lot perhaps, that, that has to be shielded, and we can even go one step further and you can require a dawn to dusk, you know, some sort of a curfew for the lighting if you would, that's not been an uncommon thing, in the past, we have, you know, requested that parking lot lighting be shut off by a certain time, if the building isn't being occupied, there would be no reason to have lighting, you could in fact impose some sort of a condition that further regulates the, the.
The time.
The timing of the lighting, but at this point, like I said, they don't have any proposed lighting in the parking lot, so I, I don't see that that's really relevant to the, to this specific plan, but certainly, we can address that for possible future lighting if you want.
But by having, by conditioning this resolution on the commercial lighting standards, that will take care of the lights that they are proposing to have.
Exactly.
On the building and will be directed down, etc.
Right, right.
So, I'd be all in favor of that.
I, I actually don't believe that our current lighting standards are adequate for this situation where we're putting a commercial building in the, in a residential area, and I personally receive complaints about this from other areas because while the lighting is not actually leaving the property, it's still so bright that it is very visible from the adjacent properties, so I believe we should be looking at a dark sky standard and perhaps motion sensors on any kind of exterior lighting in the evening so that it only comes on when there's actually activity outside the building. Right, and I think that's, that is. You know, you've heard me on this before, so. No, and I, and I think many will agree with you, that, yeah, perhaps the existing lighting section of our code is a little insufficient, that is something that we will be looking at in the zoning code update, however, right now, we've got, you know, you do have, I think, the, the purview to, to further condition this particular through the conditional use permit, so if you see fit, then you can put whatever. Right. Language you think is necessary to reduce any potential impact that you might see upon the residential neighborhood. I think it's up to all the commissioners, but I'd like to see those couple of items looked at, I mean, to, to reduce both the intensity of the light on that is visible from adjacent properties to, there is quite a bit of screening with the landscaping, so I think that will be helpful, and to use motion sensors so lights don't just remain on all the time. And to require a permit if they were to, to install additional future exterior lighting, you mentioned that Gina, so I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
Do you think it's a good idea?
Well, are, are you talking like parking lot lights or just light on the exterior of the building?
I'm talking about the lights on the, the packs on the outside of the building, those are one of the things I get the most complaints about from people in residential neighborhoods seeing commercial building, some of those are extraordinarily bright, and while the cone doesn't actually leave the property, you can see them pretty easily from the adjacent properties, so I think whatever we can do to minimize the impact on the neighbors would be great.
If for some reason we were to decline this CUP, there's nothing that would stop them from trying to subdivide the property and put all those 20 structures.
Correct, so.
And there's no reason why they wouldn't be able to do that, if this is declined, they can come back and start over as a subdivision?
Correct, so if you, for whatever reason, did not want to approve this use permit, that would certainly be within the property owner's, you know, discretion to come back with a subdivision map application, not that that's what they have indicated they're going to do, but certainly, it is, it is, it is a possibility for that particular lot to be further subdivided and houses built subsequent to the subdivision approval.
Which could be taller than what we have. Exactly, 35 feet, and would the view have any?
Well, yes, I mean, it's always, everything, everything is, that application as well would be subject to CEQA which would been, you know, which of course scenic vistas and views and things would be subject to our analysis of potential impacts, so we'd be having the discussion again.
Is that something, is there any precedence where they have not allowed subdivisions to go on because of something that's not necessarily?
Honestly, Don, it's been quite a long time since we've processed an actual subdivision map. You know, and CEQA, of course, adds new sections all the time, so, you know, not to say that it wasn't something that was considered part of CEQA back in, in, you know, the old days, some of these major subdivisions, I'm sure it probably was, but a lot of them were done through environmental impact reports, and as we all know, EIRs have the ability for overriding consideration, so big difference. They could theoretically do a parcel split and then subdivide whatever parcel they split off from this section and do it simply as a four-way split, I mean, there's, there's lots of things that could happen, but we're just speculating, we don't know what the intention is, so.
I, I heard some concern from, about fencing and separation of the equestrian, is that something we could also?
Well, the equestrian easement itself, and pardon me, correct me if I'm wrong, Madeline, but the equestrian easement is not on the subject parcel, it's actually within the adjacent. It's actually within the adjacent subdivision.
But the concern was whether, that there should be a fence on the church side of the, the bridal wood.
Well, my feeling is, anyone that is utilizing an easement should know exactly where the easement lies. So, you know, whether it's a trail or a utility easement or a road easement, if you have the right to utilize it, you should know exactly where you are at all times.
It's, it's.
I would say it would be up to, if, if the church thought that there was going to be an issue with riders riding off the easement onto their property, they could certainly choose to put up a fence for their own purposes, you know, to, but I don't know that it's necessary for us to actually condition the permit to, to designate their property boundary.
It's the kids chasing the volleyball down from the parking lot and running onto the bridal way, et cetera. But we might have an answer right here.
And, and before we hear from Robin, we would typically, if this was a commercial parcel, it would be required to provide a fence between it and residential development.
There would be screening, that would be screening.
Right, of some sort, so. So, Robin, would you like to clarify for us?
I, I would just like to point out that because of the way the site is graded, there's a significant bank along, in fact, you saw a picture of it earlier taken by one of the bridal wood folks. There's a fill bank on the bridal wood side, and there's curbing all around the parking in the drive. So, there really isn't any way for a vehicle, once the site is finished, to get from the developed portion of the site across that 100 feet of open space to the easement that we're talking about. You can't get there from here, once the site is developed, because of the nature of the improvements and the grading.
Would there be curbing on the driveway also?
On the parking lot, certainly. On portions of the driveway to control drainage. But there are fills on that side as well, so, again, it's very difficult.
It would be an accident.
For vehicles to get over there, yeah. Unlike pre-construction, the pre-construction conditions where there really was no control of vehicular movement, there will be, those controls will be in place when the site is finished.
Actually, that was one of my questions. You kind of jumped ahead, is the possibility of a condition that does not allow them to develop overflow parking off of the developed pad. Is that a possibility? Since that seems to be a concern, and I think it would be, I agree with Robin, looking at that site plan, it looks like it'd be a very difficult thing to do anyway, but that seems to be a concern of the neighbors.
Well, wouldn't they have to limit the parking to what's shown on the site plan?
I don't know how you see people gravel and develop overflow areas.
Well, and that's, that's the thing is, putting, putting down some gravel isn't going to require a permit, so.
Exactly.
They could certainly do, do something like that and, you know, without any discretion from this commission or even from our department, so I suppose if you.
But if, if a condition of this permit is that they not do that, at least they would be aware that, that that's not something we are encouraging them to do in the future. I don't want to see that.
Well, I suppose you don't have to park on gravel. You know, I mean, I guess if they had the need for overflow parking, they could just simply choose to park out in the field. I, I don't know.
Well, not if we conditioned it.
Not if we say that they're not allowed to do that, that they have to confine their operations to this developed pad and their activities.
What happens to the parking should they have overflowed, they weren't anticipating?
Then they come back in and.
Two seconds.
Yeah, and.
Now, when you say activities, what do you mean, activities? They can't go out and put a volleyball net up? Is that what, I mean?
Since outdoor activities is one of the things that's, that's most in question, is what will be happening beyond the developed area and whether it will be loud, lit up, what hours it will be happening, you know, to what extent it is. We just don't have an answer on that.
No.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't anticipate a church. I'm not anticipating a church to be open 24/7, you know, operating at 3:00 AM on a Saturday night.
I, I'm anticipating that a church could develop the lower portion of that area pretty extensively for kids, weddings, special events, and that, that could be an imposition on the neighbors that will not get reviewed. That, that's all I'm saying. And I'm not saying that I would even want to prevent them from doing it. I would just want it to be something that we reviewed.
So, are you saying that you would be in favor of conditioning the permit to require a special events permit for any outdoor activity?
Perhaps. That is what I wrote in my notes.
That would be consistent with the application, and they said it was all going to be indoors. So, it gives them the option.
Well.
Yeah, I'm not trying to stop them from doing those.
No, absolutely not. I'm just, I mean.
I'm just looking for.
That could also be kind of a slippery slope. I mean, if you have, you know, the need to have, I mean, you find yourself congregating outside, you know, one Sunday after church services, and then all of a sudden, we get a flood of phone calls come Monday morning that they had an outdoor activity that was not otherwise permitted. I just kind of anticipate that rolling into.
So, is there a way we can define some extent of the intensity of that? How many people, whatever? I don't know. I mean, what, what is the?
Well, maybe we should poll the rest of the commission and see if that's really where they want to go, and then we can, if, if that's the case, then I suppose we could spend some additional time.
I think, again, Robin's going to add something to the discussion.
Only with your authorization. There are several ways to address this question. Quickest and easiest would be to require some sort of vegetative screen on the property line that shields the view of whatever happens on the church side from the folks in the bridal wood subdivision. I'm not sure that's in the best interest of the folks in the bridal wood subdivision. I'm not sure that's what I would want, and, and I wouldn't go so far as to recommend that. A wall of vegetation can be a very annoying thing. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that's the right approach. That's the meat axe approach. And I don't think it's reasonable to require any sort of outdoor activity to require a special use permit. That's, that's a system designed for failure. There's something in between, and if there, and I have to admit, I have not measured from the bridal wood property line over to the developed part of the, of the site. Let's say it's 100 feet, for the sake of discussion. It may be that a condition that requires any outdoor activities within a buffer, a strip of X distance west of the bridal wood subdivision, those require special consideration. And then activities close to the building, a barbecue with 20 people that isn't going to bother anybody, that shouldn't require a special permit. So, establish a buffer around the, the adjacent subdivision and require special consideration for outdoor activities within that buffer. That'd be my recommendation.
Yep, that's where I was headed with it also, so I think that's a, a reasonable, but it's really up to all the commissioners how they feel about that.
A buffer seems reasonable to me. Yes?
I, I, I'm not against a buffer. However, I don't want to limit the outdoor activity of this goes through. I do see the need to maybe limit additional construction or, or a workaround of putting a temp, parking lot, for example, in. But as far as, you know, an activity outside, maybe they want to put a jumpy up for some kids during the summer. I mean, I don't see limiting that.
No, either do I. I'm just looking for a way to provide a little bit of additional distance from whatever activity to the neighbors. Also, a large special event would require a special event permit anyway, right? If they're doing things outside, or is that sort of part of this? They have not proposed or described to us what their outdoor activities will be, correct?
Said that there would not be any.
I would say if they were, say, for instance, renting their property as a wedding venue and, you know, they were otherwise having special events out underneath the big oak tree, and that might be a use that we can logically see as beyond the use of a, of a church facility. Of course, anything within the building, I think, is perfectly permitted because occupancy of the building will dictate the numbers of people that are allowed.
Exactly.
But certainly, outdoor activities, you know, I, I suppose you could require, if it was truly something that fell under a special event, something that might be open to the public, you could certainly require a special event permit, which is an administrative use permit. It's $100. You know, we require some middle of that about 30 days prior to the event. So, there's a process, there's an application for it with an established fee.
Would that apply without a condition being put in this permit here? So, we wouldn't need.
It is, it is a section of code. You know, there might be some question as to whether or not church activities are permitted or whether they're, you know, fall under the special events section of the code. I think it's going to be, you know, the nature of the event is to determine whether or not, you know, it needs a permit or not. It's, it's kind of a gray area. But yes, there is a section in the code that does require a special event permit for, for events on properties in the county, any property in the county.
Including church property.
Any, any property in the county.
So, it sounds like yes to the buffer. Maybe we need to think a little bit more and keep, move on to get through the rest of the discussion and come back to this, whether or not we need a special event condition or if it's covered well enough by county code.
So, are you saying that you want to continue this discussion to another hearing?
No, no, just continue talking right now.
Oh, oh, okay.
Wrong word, maybe.
Well, you, you said move on, and I was thinking move on to the next item.
No, no, keep talking right now, whatever the next item is on somebody's list.
Okay.
So, we're currently in the questions for the staff, right?
Yes, and.
The general discussion of the issues coming up.
Yes.
So, is the, the public hearing is still open? Is that correct?
The public comments are.
No, comments is closed. Is the public hearing?
The public hearing is still open.
It is still open?
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct. Or did we get through all of our?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, I, if you get to discussion, we've got more discussion.
So, I think first we need to give the applicant an opportunity, although he's kind of jumped up. Is there anything you want to sum up or, or additional information you'd like to provide in response to the public comments?
I had my thoughts all aligned, and now we've gone sideways. And I, and I do believe this discussion has, has touched on most of what I had to say, so I'll, I'll skip through this rather quickly. I did want to suggest that most parking lots of this type do incorporate some type of pole-mounted lighting. It's just the reality of largish parking lots, and I would expect, even though you don't have a building permit application for one today, you probably will see one sometime in the future. So, I think lighting conditions should, are appropriate, and they should be applied to all lighting without regard to type. And I think we should anticipate some type of parking lot lighting in the future. I just wanted to make the record clear on that. Noise came up, and there was a suggestion that noise levels have increased after the grading was done. I don't know that, I, I don't live in bridal wood, so I don't, I can't comment on that. I will say, though, to Mr. Barrett's point earlier, it will not remain in its present state for very long. We will move forward and construct a building and then landscape around the entire parking area. So, to Mr. Barrett's point, I believe sound attenuation may be greater after construction of the facility than it was prior to any disturbance of the site. I do want to point out, too, that churches are among the more quiet of uses. And the reason for that is, most of the activities occur during the daylight hours. Few evening services of any size. And that's a general statement about churches in general. So, noise isn't one of the more common complaints that, that we deal with as it relates to this type of use. I just wanted to point that out. Another thing that I think is important to note for the record is that there, there was a comment about a school in the future, and I, and I did want to point back to the application, that rather clearly indicates that there will be classrooms in the building. Is that a school? I just wanted to point out that the notion of a school and classrooms is already baked into the application inside the building.
Except when you're talking about down to 10 acres.
I'm sorry?
That was coming from the audience, but I'll, I'll ask the question. I think the comments were that they understood that the church was talking about future development away from this particular area on, on the parcel.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I understood, I understood that. And that, of course, isn't, isn't in the current site plans, and.
No.
Any suggestion of development north of the current developed site will require a trip back, back to the planning commission. But in the meantime, I just wanted to make sure that the concept of a school and classrooms is part of the current application.
I wanted to ask you about the, on the landscaping. I don't, my understanding is that landscaping really is not a sound barrier. I mean, that stuff goes through landscaping, but I'm going to be raising, in the later discussion, the, the maturity of the plants that are going to be planted around the parking lot. There's no specification, I understand there's specification as to species, but, you know, if it's an oak tree that's only eight inches tall, it, it doesn't provide a visual buffer for many, many years. And I'm, I'm going to be exploring having the landscape conditioning to be more of a visual, the landscaping as shown on the parking lot as being higher than, than what very immature plants would provide in order to buffer the, the visual impact of this. That's good.
Landscape design is quite an art, and a good landscape designer will design for a mature plant and then plant, spaced plantings so that the mature site is appropriate for the, for the intended purpose. The biggest mistake I see with landscape plans is lots of larger plants close together so that we get an instant screen, and then in five years, it's a total mess. So, I would just ask you to be cautious in the way you craft that condition.
I, I understand. I think my concern is that some of them be of good size to provide the visual buffer. Not, not the number of the plants, but the.
Trees and the paper.
I, I would, and you, you leaped forward, so I'm going to go there since we're talking about landscaping. There was some discussion and concern about the removal of oaks, and, and I understand that I'm sensitive to oak removal. Unfortunately, in my business, I see it every day. Why not incorporate into the landscape condition replacement oak planting? Why not incorporate into the landscape condition, replacement oak plantings? Pick the ratio, whatever is convenient, it's not mitigation, but it's an appropriate way to re-initiate that oak woodland concept where a couple of trees had to be removed to accommodate the use. Nobody, there isn't any significant increase in cost, it's, it's an appropriate way to address the oak situation, and I, and I think it's the right thing to do, and I would suggest that as you craft that landscape condition, incorporate some oak replacement into it.
While we're on the oaks, those that were knocked down during the grading, there was no way that you could do the grading that was necessary for this site as planned with those oaks still in existence, is that correct?
Not a chance. We were, we were fortunate that it only affected a few trees, there are a number of other trees that were spared, so the footprint is as small as it could be, given the use and the, you know, the needs of the, of the congregation. I, I should stop now. I'll say one, one last thing. And it is this. The property until January, I'm sorry, until earlier this year was Zone C1. In the C1 zoning district, the church is a permitted use by right, so until just a few months ago, this use was permitted by right, and it was permitted by right when these folks bought the property, and it was permitted by right when they tried to develop it in '03, '04, and for a variety of reasons weren't successful. And it was permitted by right in this zoning district when they submitted building permit, building plans for permitting in 2020, and then even when they submitted another plan development permit application in January of this year, it was just a couple months later, the zoning was, I will say, pulled from underneath them. Now, I do respect greatly the notion of folks in an adjacent subdivision, the, the concept that they bought their property for their, for the views and the rural nature of the area, I get that, and I hear that a lot, I really do. However, when every one of the complainants purchased their property, this property was Zone C1, and a church was a permitted use. Should the realtor have told them? Maybe. Should they have done due diligence at the county to, to determine that, or to establish that, yes, in fact, a church had been proposed earlier and was permitted previously, and just didn't get constructed for reasons that probably had more to do with finances than anything else? Should tho, should those things have been done? Yes. Yes. It's, there's no surprise here that this was a commercially zoned property and that a church was planned for the property. I just wanted to point that out, and with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions here. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, we're back to, the continuing, there's better word for that, maybe, more discussion.
I, more of a question about this idea of a buffer zone. Looking at the site plan, it looks like the parking is gonna be on the north side, and on the south side, and on the west side.
There's a lot more parcel than that, though.
So I'm not too clear on where the buffer would be, and how it would be described.
This is the entire parcel, but you're taking only a portion of the, the path there. Along these two sides that are all residential.
Can I, can I suggest that since, since what we're, since if we're considering a no activity buffer, it's to, it's to offset possible impacts to the residential neighborhood, so perhaps it's just something that needs to be adjacent to that property boundary with the residential subdivision to the east, rather than the entire parcel, since it does actually front two roads, we don't really see much of an impact there. I think it's mainly to, you know, to help preserve and protect.
So you're talking on the east side parcel?
Um, yes, the boundary on the east.
Okay, and on the plan, there is, are there parking on the east side? Looks like there is. So you're talking a buffer zone around the parking lot?
No, I, I think it's a, and maybe I'm wrong, I, I was under the impression it was a buffer zone from the property boundary?
Right.
From the property boundary towards the, however wide you think that needs to be, just to eliminate the possibility of outdoor activities, whether it's parking, or volleyball, or anything else, that would eliminate, you would identify a swath of land adjacent to the Bridlewood subdivision, that the church would then know that they can't do any outdoor activities at that particular location.
So it'd be like so many feet from the equestrian trail?
Sure.
Or from, just from the property boundary.
From the property boundary, because, keep in mind, the equestrian trail is not within the project site, it's actually within the adjacent subdivision.
Okay, and what's the suggestion on how many feet that should be?
Well, that's gonna have to be...
Well, Mr. Peters is saying, he's the one who brought it up.
I might suggest fifty feet is the right number, given the, the way the site is graded.
I was looking at thirty to fifty, just the thirty is the wildfire clearance anyway, and so.
And I would, I would suggest that the vision I had was a buffer fifty feet in width adjacent to the easterly boundary of the, of the, adjacent to the westerly boundary of the Bridlewood subdivision.
Right. And the door.
No, no outdoor activities within that buffer area without, per securing a special use permit, which may or may not be approved.
I think if we establish the buffer zone, it should be a buffer zone, but my concern with it is, we say, oh, no activities within this, the implication is, past that, you can do whatever you want, fireworks displays, and this sort of thing, so, you know, there are...
But that would require us...
I'm a little worried about the opposite way, is if they need to go down and maintain that thirty-foot buffer, run lawnmower through there, now they're violating a buffer.
Yeah, I don't think we want it, we obviously want to allow maintenance within that land.
Well, I think the, I think the residential neighborhood would appreciate maintenance of that fence line for fire purposes.
Absolutely. And I think it would want to apply to the northern boundary as well.
I forget who's up there.
Well, other parcels are up there, I think it's a different subdivision, but it is residential parcel, rural residential parcel.
Perhaps some of these things, and I think we should continue the discussion right now, but during a break, we might be able to crystallize some of our, our proposals. Commissioner Woosher, you, you have more questions at this point, or?
No.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to get back to the, the rolling hills idea, the scenic vista. It seems to me that this application has been processed with recognition that there are gently rolling hills on this property, but gee, if you put in a scenic vista classification on every rolling hill in the county, the whole county, I think when we have an application, and we recognize that there are rolling hills on the property, I think it, either we assume that they, they are a scenic vista, or we actually study, you know, what can be seen from the public lands, public roads, and determine whether these rolling hills are scenic vistas. We obviously do not have a scenic vista commission that is going around the county and saying, this is a scenic vista, and those rolling hills are not. My own feeling is, is that once we say there are rolling hills on the property, that that, unless we determine otherwise, that is a scenic vista, and we should at least get a checkmark on, under aesthetics in the environmental document, that it's less significant impact with mitigation, and then come up with a mitigation for it.
I just want to also, from a sequoia perspective, just mention that it's possible, and I don't know how the, the commission can decide for this one, just because something is a scenic vista, or would be deemed by a court as a scenic vista, doesn't mean the impact to it is significant, or potentially significant. So that's, these are very loose standards, they are not easy, but just so you, you understand your full range of options, it's possible that simply in a, in a, in a negative declaration, somebody could say, this is, there is no definition in sequoia for a scenic vista, it's defined as such by the general plan, here's why the impact to it would not be significant in the full environmental context, because the courts do say that you look at the environmental context, it's not just a yes, necessarily a yes or no, that if you develop on a scenic vista, it's automatically requiring mitigation.
The question is, is it have a substantial adverse effect on a scenic vista?
Right, but that doesn't mean any necessarily, the courts aren't gonna say any development is automatically...
I understand.
Okay.
But I would, taking Ms. Crane's approach, cumulative is, is a, is a thing to keep in track here, if we could, if we just assume that these rolling hills aren't a scenic vista, and as far as I can tell, there's been no study as to whether they are or not, that, and whether this development would have a substantial adverse effect on a scenic vista, well, of course, they locked off the top of one hill, and we don't know exactly how this is affecting view from the public roads and stuff, you know, my tendency would be to say that it's a less than significant impact with mitigation, which would mean that we'd have to have a mitigated negative declaration. If the commission doesn't want to go that far, I want to make sure that we would have... Conditions that would mitigate, I mean, it's, it's been a major change in what people see from the border of the property, and I think the landscape plan can't possibly take care of that, but I think it needs to be a landscape plan that, that provides, not in thirty-five years, but now or very soon. Having said that, I think, I, I fully understand the residents of the Bridle Vale development feeling that they are, are suffering a significant loss from what they have had. The problem is, they don't own this property, and this, this property, as has been pointed out, if the church does not develop a church on the property, they could go for a subdivision of the property, and, which could result in having twenty residences, each one taller than the, what the church building's going to be. I think, my own feeling is, is that we make this work, we make this work in a way that, that respects the property interests of the church, but also...
...respects the impact that it's really having on, on the nearby residents and, and upon the public. So I would at least be very interested in having a very detailed landscape plan, as I understand it, I, I agree with Commissioner Woosher, it should be part of the, of the conditions at the least, and that it involves not just the species, but provisions that will make it so that this will provide some, some screening, effective screening in the very near future. That's, that's where I stand.
Aesthetics, I, I think the chair has some very good ideas as far as the lighting goes, and, and I think, as pointed out by staff, the lighting can be subject to, to ours, and I think we want to make sure that, that that just, it doesn't have to be a lighting blight out here in this, right next to residences. That's, that's what I have for now.
So I think we should take a break, but I'd like to, if there's any other potential condition that's in anyone's mind, any other issue they want to make sure is addressed, that we get that out there now, so staff and all of us can let it wander around in the back of our heads, while we take this ten-minute break. Okay.
Because you can't discuss it during the break as a commission.
Right, and we understand, just letting it rattle in the back of our heads.
So, just for clarity, are you asking us to go back and, and craft some language for the new conditions, and bring it?
No, I'm just making sure that we don't go take a break and come back and, and a whole new thing gets brought up, I'm just, like, so we, we know what we'll be discussing when we come back, and is ten minutes enough for everybody? We might have a lo, oh, it's almost lunchtime, do we want to take a lunch break?
Might as well.
Okay, so we, we don't think that we're near conclusion of at least this item, so the folks that have been here for the last couple hours...
Yeah, so could we, could we conclude it?
I mean, are, are we close enough that we can just barrel through this one item, take our lunch break, and come back with the, with the second item on the agenda?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to take at least a five-minute break.
Right.
We can, we can do that.
So what I was suggesting was, just one moment, I was suggesting maybe a ten-minute break, come back, finish this item, and then take lunch. I would be in favor.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, there's a member of the public...
I was wondering how much longer this was gonna go on for?
Hopefully not too much longer, we're trying to get you out of here.
We are too.
Okay, ten minutes, everybody, and let's come back and get it done. So in case anyone's sitting out there, they might want to come on in. All right, our break is over, and we will carry on with our discussion. So Tim?
I just would like to get a sense of the commission as to whether or not they think that the scenic vista question should have been answered less than significant impact with mitigation, if we don't believe that that should be...
You need to turn your mic on, sorry.
Nope, sorry about that. I'd like to get a reading from the commission, other commissioners, as to whether they think that the scenic vista question in the environmental document should have been answered as less than significant impact with mitigation. If the answer is no to that, then I think we just move on to what the proper conditions would be to help alleviate the, the effects on the, on the scene, if not the scenic vista.
So Brett, would you like to weigh in on that?
On that, that portion, I, I believe it to be as a cumulative, as not just for a particular job site, or property, so I believe it would be a cumulative.
So how do you believe that, that the environmental...
I believe the environmental study is, is correct.
Okay. Go on.
I think so.
Okay. Okay.
I, I agree, this, the write-up that we have here points out that the surrounding parcels are developed with single-family residences, and that's true. And so, yes, you may have a hill or two that somebody can see from their private residence, or if they're not watching where they're driving on the road, they might look at it, but it's not a vista, and it's not something that the, the public has any need to be looking at, to be preserved. So I think it's correct the way it is, less than significant impact.
I agree, I believe it's a less than significant impact, although I agree the wording and the situation with the definition is a less than ideal, but I'm fine with the way the environmental document is. So now, on to your next suggestion.
Well, then, I, I think we do, that doesn't mean that this doesn't have any effect on the neighbors.
Yeah.
And, and I'm concerned that the, along with Commissioner Wooster, that the landscaping plan is not specifically made a condition on this permit, and I also am concerned, and I'm not qualified to make these refinements, I think that it should not only have species of the vegetation specified, which it isn't on the planet, on the landscape plan itself that we see, but some provision that, that these, at least some of these need to be mature plants. And also, and I, I take the developer's representative's recommendation as good, that, oaks be planted, not necessarily on the parking lot, but to at least replace the oaks that were, were knocked down during the grading. I don't, I'm not qualified to draft a condition that would take care of those conditions.
And I don't think we are either. So my, my suggestion is that we can roll that into a condition to require a landscape architect actually design a plan prescriptive to, you know, the things that you think that need to be addressed. I'm, I'm hearing, you know, noise, I'm hearing visual impacts, so those are the kinds of things we can, we can actually have a professional put together a plan and.
I'm so relieved to hear that suggestion.
Yeah.
I, I think that's, that's good, and I'm.
And then we can also include the, a three-to-one replacement for the loss of oaks, if you want to see that as well.
That sounds good to me, I don't know about the rest of the commission.
What was the last one?
We can include a three-to-one replacement for the loss of the oak trees that were taken out during the grading.
Is that the accepted practice that they're going with?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I, I personally, I think it's overkill, but two of the three are probably going to die anyway.
Right.
Thank you, Johnny Appleseed.
I'm also not qualified to do anything about the landscape plan, I, I am concerned about requiring that it be done by a landscape architect, although I think that's ideal. There's a shortage of landscape architects familiar with our area, so, you know.
Don't we have one right in Angels Camp?
I did, I did have a licensed landscape design plan done by Frog Hollow, who's local.
He's not a landscape architect, he is, that's what my concern, he is a landscape designer, and so I was hoping maybe we could describe it as some, an experienced landscape designer familiar with the area.
Familiar with the area, I, I think that's more acceptable.
That that was all.
Bless you.
Bless you, yes.
But I think it's, it's important that the concern be in there that, that it's providing visual screening now, some visual screening now. I just don't want to see a bunch of eight-foot-tall trees, and I, and I certainly understand, we don't want them planted, we don't want oaks to be planted six inches from each other and this sort of thing, so I think an experienced landscape designer is, with knowledge of the area, is a good idea.
So are you interested in visual screening, or are you asking them to deal with the sound at all, which is a very, very difficult?
I'm, I'm interested in the visual screening, because my experience is that, that, I mean, you can have an eight-foot-thick hedge that does not screen the sound, so I'm, I'm interested in visual screening.
Is that the consensus of the commission?
Some emphasis on drought tolerant and native landscaping, and potentially softening of the unnatural contours with that landscaping at the edges of the pad, but I don't know even how to say that in a, in a nice brief way, but I'm, I'm sure Gina can figure that Is everybody pretty much in agreement with those criteria?
I think that'll work. See, yeah, that does seem reasonable.
Yeah.
On lighting, I, I think you were on the right track.
Can't remember like half an hour ago.
Well, I, I mean, I kind of wrote down, kind of, just the gist of what it was, and it was subject to current lighting standards of the county, and then exterior lighting should be shut off between, when the building is not occupied.
Right.
That was one that I, I see that's reasonable, and the lights not to be on between the hours of, say, 10, 10, 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.
Right. More, more current energy codes already require motion sensors and lighting to be off, and there's a lot of things that really maybe are already covered. Enforcement is not, and modifications done after occupancy are common, and so I think just, you know, you, the use of motion sensors and timers to, to limit the light to when the building is actually occupied, or that it's providing a real security purpose.
And I, I would like to, to hope that, you know, the church and the neighbors, you know, will work together, if the neighbors are finding that there's impacts, you know, something that's bothering them, whether it's lighting or whatever, that they have an open line of communication, and that the church, you know, will attempt to be, you know, a, a good neighbor, a good residential neighbor, if you will, hopefully they can work together to prevent any, you know, future issues with the things that we're talking about as well.
I think that's, that's very necessary.
Yeah.
As a baseline, though, I think the, requiring the commercial standard is a start, and then all these embellishments.
Right, it is a commercial building, so it should have to comply with commercial standards, even though it's in a residential zone.
So you can just take the language from the ordinance that governs commercial buildings, make it a condition, and add whatever gets decided, and I think I'm hearing motion sensors would be a good idea.
Yes.
The problem with most sensors is if a dog runs across there, or a deer runs across, you're going to have lights on.
It's probably not.
Well, I think that's a building code right now anyway, right?
But if somebody comes in the evening and needs to get in there and they can't see, that's catch 22.
Right, so there's so many ways that this can be managed with current lighting technology. I don't think we need to specify how to do it, we need to, to specify that, that they minimize the lighting and the impact on the neighbors, and the visibility of lights from the adjacent residences, and that can partially be helped out with the landscaping, but, but also by just keeping those light levels to the least that they need. We definitely don't want to try to design their lighting plan for them here.
No.
And then we're going to have a buffer zone, what was the sense of it, 30 feet or 50 feet?
50 feet, I think, is what.
From the eastern and northern boundaries?
Yes.
Yep.
And when we state that, we might mention the special events ordinance or something, so people don't think, oh, well, anywhere other than that buffer zone is okay to do anything. I don't know if that's a concern.
Maybe we just want to reference the county's special event.
Yeah.
Yes, just like we do for other things, so that somebody doesn't say, oh, I didn't have any idea that.
Because I, I would hate to think that, you know, a youth volleyball game.
Yeah, it's fine.
On a Sunday afternoon after church would be, you know, misconstrued as a special event.
No, and a picnic outside with 20 people's fine. Yeah.
I think just mentioning, mentioning that ordinance and having the buffer zone takes care of things.
I think that has basically covered my main concerns.
Let's see, I haven't looked at the ordinance.
Yeah, well, we need to look at the resolution one more time.
Somebody was concerned about how long it was going to take to build the project, I'm just curious, you know, they were talking about short of funds possibly, is this a fully funded project, are we allowed to ask that, so that we can have an idea if they're going to be able to complete it in a timely manner?
I recently spoke with John LaSoya, who's the, one of the contractor that spoke earlier, who's been one of the agents for processing, and.
Could you speak up a little?
I'm so sorry. And he, John LaSoya, was, I was speaking to him earlier, and he said, because I, I was stating, you know, the CUP, unless it's validated by December 31st of 2022, the permit will expire, and so I was suggesting, should, you know, should we have this hearing in January that would give you all of 2022 and into the end of 2023 in order to complete the project, and he said, no, we are ready to go right now.
And since you're going to be, I, I have another comment on the resolution, even though you haven't presented it to us.
Sure.
The condition 4-4, which is with the public works department, and condition 5-3 from the Calaveras County Water District, I want to make sure that they're consistent, that 4-4 talks about water storage, or an addition of a hydrant closer to the building will be required, and 5-3 talks about the fire line's connection to the district water main on Copper Cove Drive and enter into the facilities agreement for extension of the six-inch water main. I, I didn't see a contradiction in there, but they're both dealing with the same subject, and I wanted to make sure that.
No, they're totally separate.
Not exactly, yeah.
Usually a fire line is a separate system from the domestic, and it's dedicated to a minimum of six-inch service line for all fire risers, sprinklers.
But it, it could be connected to a hydrant.
No.
No, they're separate issues.
They have their own backflow systems.
Okay.
Totally separate.
So these are two different, but, but consistent?
Consistent.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure we weren't mixing that.
Okay, if we're on the resolution with page 5, condition 3-2, no, 3-4, pardon me, is the one that requires the church provide a traffic analysis to determine the need for a left turn pocket, et cetera, but I think I understood from earlier today, that's already been done.
Yeah, yes.
So shouldn't that be stripping?
We can.
And perhaps it should be codified in our description that it has already taken place and it's not required.
In what description?
I'm just.
The aware as, or?
Yeah, exactly.
Under the third, 20, maybe?
Just looking.
Well, I think you could put it in the description on 5, 3.
Yeah, yep, I agree.
Just note today, the traffic analysis was provided to determine the need, et cetera, and it indicated that a pocket is not needed.
And you caught Commissioner Wooster's pointing out the typo, 3-3 is really 2-3?
2-3, yes.
Okay.
Are there any other comments on the resolution?
Not for me.
Not for me either.
But are we going to see a final version at some point?
If you would like to see a final version, can we craft this before the end of the day? I'm, I'm going to be sitting in on the remainder of the meeting, I don't know if, if Maddie can come up with some language before the end of the meeting, if for some reason we can't, can we bring it back to you? Whoa, that won't be until January.
I hate to put it off that long.
Right. So, Robin, is it important that you have this done today, or would January be workable?
I'm sorry, could you restate the question?
Is it important that this be completed today, or would January work just as well for you if we are making modifications to the resolution to include all this discussion?
I think it's workable to do it today, we're only talking about a couple of conditions.
Yeah, okay.
We, we could write those conditions in 15 minutes.
If Madeline has time to do that.
Maybe we ought to ask Mr. Peters to volunteer to work on it with her.
Yes, I know, he'd like to have lunch with you.
Otherwise, we're looking at, what, January 13th?
So, if we could have it today, even right after lunch, I don't think that the public, as long as they trust us to actually do what we're saying, then we'd have to come back, but we could get it done and out of here today.
Okay.
And Robin would only have to stay here till for another hour or so.
Is, is the public hearing closed at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the public comment period is closed.
Yes, right. So I'd like to hear from Madeline what's workable for her.
I, I can do whatever you ask me to do. I'm hanging here, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm getting everything that we, because there have been a couple other things that were tossed around, so the new conditions, 50-foot buffer, commercial standards for lighting with motion sensors, are we doing a curfew as well? The 10 to 6 curfew for lighting, or are we just doing the motion sensors?
No, commercial standards with all the enhancements we discussed.
Yeah, but it's curfew.
But that includes, that includes lights being shut off when the building's not occupied?
I, I just think the use of time clocks, integrated lighting systems, motion sensors as appropriate, let them design it to minimize the light being on, to prohibit it being on during daylight hours, and minimize it being on when the facility is not occupied.
Is that otherwise codified in the building code at this point?
No.
No, okay.
It's kind of covered in the energy standards.
Okay.
Not always well-understood or well-enforced.
And the word minimize is important there, because complete shut off of light isn't, isn't a good idea for security purposes, it's not good for the site, it's not good for the neighbors either, it creates a place for bad things to happen, so minimize is the right word.
So the goal being to, to limit the impact on the residential neighbors.
And then landscaping, requiring a landscape architect using drought tolerant.
An experienced landscape designer.
Designer. Designer.
Familiar with this area.
Subject to approval by the planning department?
That sounds good.
So, we don't have to come back?
Yeah. The object of visual screening from the beginning.
Right. Drought tolerant and replacement of the oaks.
Placement of the oaks is part of the landscaping.
Yeah.
Three-to-one?
Three-to-one.
Which, again, is somewhat covered in the building code and green building code standards, but again, not well-understood or enforced.
Yes.
Should we have a motion now to approve or disapprove of this, or wait until we get the resolution? Because we know what's going to be in it. It should just be a question of reviewing it.
Yeah, so Julie, tell us if we can approve it without having the wording.
I don't know if that's written in stone. I mean, I think technically, if you're asking, I mean, you could direct them what you write and just have it proceed, but if you're saying you want to hear it, I would wait until after.
That's what I was thinking. So, you want to hear it right?
I don't know if I need to hear it, I just want to look at it.
Yeah.
And you'll just be fine-tuning it, if any.
Well, if it makes you feel better, we can work with Julie, and she can help us craft that solid legal language.
Like, I think we've just covered everything. I am comfortable approving it, understanding that you'll get hold of us if there's questions on the exact final wording. And are you comfortable? Are you comfortable? Are you?
I think it would, the members of the public would be more comfortable with that. They know what we're deciding.
And me too. So, are we ready for the recommendation?
Staff recommends the planning commission approve Resolution 2021-026 as amended, adopting the negative declaration and approving conditional use permit 2021-006 for the Crossroads Church for the construction and operation of a 7,434-square-foot church in the rural residential zone, based on the findings and conditions contained therein.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Passes 5-0. Thank you, everybody, for your patience with both our technological issues and the long drawn-out discussion. And why don't we take a 45-minute break for lunch? Does anyone need more? A 50-minute break for lunch, and so you guys all back here at...
Oh, yeah, Michelle.
Exactly, like, 1:15, 1:20.
Michelle, we have 15 days for approval.
I thought Don was saying something. I'm sorry.